I want to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Four of our board members is present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. You'll join me on the pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Here's my brother. Okay. Thank you all for joining us. On our agenda, we are...our first order business is to go into closed session to discuss personnel. I anticipate that we will be gone for an hour and that we will reconvene at 6:00 as it shows on the agenda to begin our recognitions. So, for those of you that have come early for that, might want to go grab a Sonic drink or have a whatever would make a good use of your time. You're certainly welcome to stay around. But at this time, the board will go into closed session, discuss personnel. Again, I anticipate that we will be back in here at 6:00 PM. It is 6:00, and so we will reconvene in open session. Thank you for joining us. It is so exciting to be part of the school district that has so many students to recognize and honor. We do this every month at our regular board meetings, and we always have a big crowd. And that's one of the exciting things that we like to do. We love to celebrate. We have much to celebrate. We have a hallway full of folks, and so one of the things we're going to have to do is make sure that we have the right group in the room when we recognize. I want to give a couple of ground rules for you. Students, when we call your section or your group up, please come up. We'll have a certificate that we're going to present to you, but we want you to stay up here, stand in front. This is a photo opportunity. We'll be taking your picture. Parents, we want you to feel comfortable about coming forward, taking pictures. Please don't worry about embarrassing your children. They want their picture taken. We'll be posting them on social media and on our website, but they want you to do that also. And we'll take as much time as we need to get the photographs that we need. I want to be...as Kyle's coming up, I want to just mention, I hope you took time to notice the art in our hallways. What a wonderful art celebration we're having to recognize the young artists throughout our school district at elementary through high school level and throughout the building. Up and down all the halls, there's wonderful artwork. We had a reception the other night, and that will be up here for the next couple of weeks, I believe. Two more weeks? Is that right? And so, please enjoy that art and celebrate our students. We're so proud of our art teachers and our programs at all levels and the work that they're doing. Okay, now, we're going to start with our national Hispanic scholars. And if y'all can start wading your way through the crowd to get to the front, Ms. Jordan's going to have a certificate for you while Mr. DeBeere gets us going.
Thank you, Mr. Pittenger. Three students from Belton High School have been invited to participate in the College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program. They're Raquel Frausto, Zachary Lopez, and Eleanor Rowe. And they are in an elite group of just 5,000 students nationwide who ultimately are part of this program, will be identified as national Hispanic scholars, and many colleges offer them scholarships as a result of that identification.
Are y'all here? Anybody y'all here? We might need somebody to relay this out in the hallway. Is anybody...
Yeah, Carol is.
Come on up. Absolutely. Oh, yeah, there we go. Dr. Brandon, are you going to help us get students in as they're on the agenda? Throw them the hallway or tell them there's room up here to sit, up there, crowd the halls, the walls? All right, while we're getting them ready for a photograph. Congratulations. We are really proud of y'all. Thank you for representing Belton and doing great. Good job. And we appreciate you coming out tonight to celebrate and share your success with us. Congratulations. All right, next up is Skills USA State Medalists. This is a really big deal for us because we had so many students participating in this program.
We had 32 students that qualified for the state competition in Corpus Christi. They brought home two state championships and a pile of other medals. I'd like to start by introducing you to our state champions in teamwork for the third consecutive year. Belton High School is the state champion, and this year's team is new to the event. James Herb, Zachary Henderson, Joseph Herman, and Dylan Wong.
Oh, they're not. There's some other Skills folks out in the hallway, too. Good job, guys. They got their MW builders.
They're advised by Craig Sullivan.
Craig, are you here? Where's Craig? Get up here, Craig. And I can't see who's here. This is a state champion team. In their first state competition, they won it. And a three-time state champion sponsor. They see Mr. Sullivan coming, and everybody else just quivers. So, this team is headed to Louisville in June, is that right? And we're going...and I saw that you posted your state banner. You might want to turn around and smile for the pictures. Sorry. All right. They've got some really nice banners, and they've got the 2016 state championship banner hung up in the shop, but we will have, hopefully bring home a state...a national championship banner for us. Good job, guys. And guys, I want to tell you before you leave, there's...we have two construction people up here on board who are going to be lobbying to hire you or give you their business or whatever. I don't know. Great job. We're really proud of you. What a great program, and we're excited about being able to expand our facility to provide even greater opportunities for our students. Next up, our district champion one-act play.
I think we skipped a bunch of our Skills folks.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're not...that was Skills USA.
Also headed to Louisville.
We got another state championship, too. Sorry, I was excited. I was ready.
Also headed to nationals are our state champions in audio/radio production, Galil Perry and Alyssa Vargas-Leone, advised by Kenna Jordy.
There you go. This is a state championship. Is that the medal?
It's great.
Both of them. What's the other one? I don't know what...all right, nice, because when you're good, you're good, right? Keep smiling, keep smiling, keep smiling. All right, wait, hang on. Kenna, is this her first time to be at state with this event and one? Great job, guys. Awesome. And you're going to nationals, right? So, you can bring us back a national championship from Louisville, too, right? Awesome. Congratulations, guys. We're really proud of you. In addition to two state champions...
Caleb Usler received a gold medal and a nearly perfect score on the electrical construction residential wiring technical test. He is also advised by Craig Sullivan.
There you go. Craig, get in there. I bet you take some pride in that one, too, huh? You won the Mary Poppins Award for being practically perfect in every way? Is that...
Natalie Craven isn't able to be with us tonight, but she placed second in screen printing technology, and her advisor is Nikki Rudloff.
Oh, here?
Not able to be with us tonight. This was Belton High School's first year competing in chapter business procedures, which is a parliamentary procedure competition, and they walked away with third place. The team is Milagros Diaz, Samantha McCormick, Elena Navarro, Haley Peace, and Jordan Ross. And Karen Francis is their advisor.
I'm so glad you brought the gavel. I wanted to see that. I'd make a motion that y'all just win it all. That's awesome. I wanted to see that gavel. Thank you for bringing that. That's so cool. Look at that. Y'all are awesome. This is again a group, our first time in this area, and... These folks, the...this group knows parliamentary procedures better than I do. I will confess that. I went and got to visit with them a little bit, and I had to do some research to catch up to them. Really impressive. Congratulations. Thanks for representing Belton.
Our forensic science team is also advised by Karen Francis and also took home a bronze medal.
There you go. Bring home another bronze.
That team is Adam Minnick, Dylan Newby, and Esteban Torres.
All right. Good job. All right, keep smiling. Keep the smiles going. All right, good job, guys. Francis, thank you for your work with our students. Congratulations.
We also had a trio of students who wowed the judges with their automotive technology projects. Cameron Taylor received a superior rating for a 4.0-liter engine block rebuild. Madison Calista received a superior rating for a Jeep rear axle rebuild, and Benjamin Penico received an excellent rating for a Briggs and Stratton small engine rebuild. And Brian Bounds is our automotive technology advisor for the competition.
Awesome. Congratulations. Great stuff. Decided about what's happening in our auto tech program. They've got a new facility coming so they can expand on the work they're doing. It's going to be great. Is that it? All right, so we do have those two groups going on to state, so we look forward to recognizing them after that. Now, the district champion one-act play.
For the second year in a row, our theater students were district champions this year with their performance of tribute. And at the district theater festival, Kyle Cordova was recognized as best actor. Nathan LeBlanc was selected for All-Star Cast, and Sumner Moore was named Honorable Mention All-Star Cast. Meanwhile, Meg Winkler won an Outstanding Crew Award. They moved on to the bi-district contest earlier this month where Kyle and Shelby Curry were named All-Star Cast. Nathan and Sumner received honorable mention All-Star Cast, and Brianna Carl was named Outstanding Tech. Casey Jones is our theater director, and Melissa Edwards is our technical director.
You know, congratulations. Before y'all leave, I just want you to know, this was a...those of you that may not have had an opportunity to see this play, this was a high-level play. This was not your ordinary high school-level one-act play. Very impressive. Should have advanced further. No sour grapes, but kind of got robbed. We know that. Listen, y'all did great. Makes me proud. Appreciate your hard work and really, really proud of what's happened in our theater program. Thank you all. That's a talented, creative, and fun group. All right, next up, we're going to recognize our all-region middle school choir. And this is a big group, and this should be fun.
And that's exciting that it's such a big group because it's more than double the number of students that qualified for the all-region middle school choir ever before.
Kyle, hang on. Let's just bring them in. Y'all come on in and let us get kind of organized and get them some certificates and get it all in place, and then you can talk about it. How's that?
That works.
Oh, wait, wait. Just come on in. You might want to get some help from the teachers to help get some certificates passed out. Oh, I like that. We get to see your faces. It looks good, Penny.
She's not here today. She couldn't make it.
Mason Morris?
He couldn't make it either.
Jacob? Eda? Erica McRue? Bethany?
Bethany.
Sasha Burnell? Haley?
Rachel? No, where's Rachel? Rachel's here.
Grace Foddenhill?
Grace is not here.
Sarah Bietico? Miranda? Kara Fish? Julia? Brianna Bet? Charles Palina? Madison Tarver?
Okay, everybody get one.
Congratulations, everybody, and I'm shaking your hands.
Now, everybody come get in, in a row and a clump. Mr. DeBeere's going to talk about you.
So, as I said, we're really excited. This is double the previous record for students to make the all-region middle school choir. And our middle school choirs are directed by Cheryl Kibbe at Lake Belton Middle School, Alicia Martinez at North Belton Middle School, and Charlotte Wurman at South Belton Middle School.
Cute. Giggles and smiles. A musical dress. This is double the number that we've had in the past, so says a lot about our strength of our choir program and the work that's being done at all of our middle schools. We are really proud of you all. Did you...Mr. DeBeere, did you finish everything, or do you want to go back and start over?
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right, let's make sure we get lots of pictures. Everybody's got a smile. I have no idea what's going on out there, so you'll have to just tell me when you're done.
I think we're good.
Congratulations. Thank you, girls and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, good job. Thank you, choir teachers. That was sweet. Good job, Penny. Boy, you had that down. And I appreciate you doing that so we could actually see their faces. That was wonderful. Let's do that again. We learned something tonight, I think. Okay, while they're leaving, we're going to recognize our district champion girls golf team, Lady Tiger Golf.
The Lady Tigers won the District 12 6A Golf Tournament, finishing 28 strokes ahead of second place midway.
Oh, no. We'll recognize them next month.
They qualified for the regional golf tournament, which was played last week. And four of our golfers were named to the all-district team. Three seniors, Madison Smith, Allison Paterka, and Morgan Tomason were named, as well as freshman Julia Garcia. Lauren Marx is the girls' golf.
They know how to pose for a picture because they've had plenty of practice. Great bunch of golfers and a great bunch of representatives of Belton. Wait, wait, wait. We're not done. Wait, wait, wait. Congratulations. We're proud of you. Got a way to win district. Yes, nice of them to wear their shirts. And now, the HGE Dance National Grand Champion Magic Bells. There you go, with banners.
National Grand Champion is just fun to say, isn't it?
Hang on. Let's let them get all up here and get their banners unfurled and then...and they know how to pose, too. I know. They're real good at posing. Use the podium. Yeah, there you go. Y'all know how to do this. All right. Slide to your left. Good job. Now, Mr. DeBeere, talk about this awesome national grand champion group.
Both the Bells as a whole and the officer line received the national grand champion awards for their performance against all of the competitors in San Antonio, and they were also national champions respectively in the large-team division. In addition to that, they received four grand champion awards for routines. The officers received three grand champion awards for routines. Both the Bells and the officers won super sweepstakes for their routines, all of their routines, in fact, in the large-team category. The hip-hop company, the lyrical company, and the social officers received additional awards, as did soloist Jasmine Ping, who was fifth in the 11th and 12th grade category, and Isabel Sessani, who was third in the 9th and 10th grade category. The magic bells are under the direction of Rachel Hill.
Congratulations, Bells. Hey, Bells, are y'all awesome? Yes, you are. Okay, one more thing. On April 30th, there's something really special coming up. Y'all want to tell everybody where they need to be on April 30th?
No, since high school PAC, our stream show is at 2:00 and 7:00.
There you go. Be there. It'll be the place to be to see the...our own national grand champions. Good job, Bells. Lots of banners to hang. Great job, Bella Bells. We're really proud of our dance program. The program continues to grow, and not only in quality, but in quantity, numbers, and really something to be proud of. Okay, our next recognition, as we continue to run the gamut of types of excellence that we're seeing with our students, the academic UIL district champions and regional qualifiers, and they've got banners and trophies, too. Come on in. Let's...once again, let's bring them all in. Let's do Penny's method, see if that works. Might get...need to get Mr. Foley's help. I like the banner. Okay, guys, hey, if everybody will look up this way towards Mr. Carruthers, he's got certificates for several of you.
Y'all scoot down that way.
Clumpian.
Y'all scoot down that way.
Come on up, get your certificates, and then we'll pose you up for some pictures. John, Sarah. Sarah?
Sarah's not here.
Sarah's not here. Is he Jim? He's here.
Christina?
I love that y'all brought your medals and trophies for us. These are so great to see. I wish I could see them. We have the worst view. Teamwork skills to leave, bring them up for this. Okay. Now, Mr. DeBeere, why don't you tell us about the academic UIL district champion and regional qualifiers?
Well, continuing tonight's theme of repeated success, this is the second time in three years that the academic UIL team has won the district championship. And we're...we have six teams and seven individuals who have qualified to compete in a total of 14 events at the regional meet in Waco later this month. And that range of events that they've qualified to compete in is truly impressive. They'll be competing in accounting, calculator applications, computer applications, computer science, current issues, editorial writing, feature writing, headline writing, news writing, literary criticism, mathematics, science, social studies, poetry interpretation, which I would point out, this is the first time in a long time that Belton High School has brought home a speech and debate medal from districts. All in all, we're just really excited about the team and excited about their prospects for regionals, and congratulations to all our regional qualifiers, and congratulations on the second district championship in three years.
Okay, everybody smile for lots of pictures, and we want to especially say thank you to the teachers and sponsors and your work with these students. Dr. Dubois, are you back there somewhere? I bet there's a proud principal in here somewhere.
I can't see back there. How are we doing on pictures? I have no idea. Are we done?
Yep.
All right, congratulations, guys. Be awesome. I like it. Looks good on those...I love those medals and banners.
If we missed anyone, just send us a name.
Yeah, make sure we missed...great, wonderful to see so many students participating in that. I might also mention that we hosted that, the district event, kind of at the last minute. We weren't supposed to host you, right? There was a last-minute change that Midway bailed on it, on district, so we just took over, and y'all just made it happen. So, thank you for doing a great job hosting that.
The kids and the coaches have made it happen.
That's great.
As important, I get to kind of ride with the show, so.
Yeah, right. Sure. And coordinate all that.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Well done. Great opportunity for our students. All right, next up, we want to recognize one of our staff members, one of our educators with the Rotary Club. This is the Belton Rotary Club educator of the quarter.
All right, thank you. We'd like to recognize Holly Schaefer from Miller Heights. Holly's being recognized by the Belton Rotary Club for her outstanding service to Belton ISD. She's a fourth-grade math and science teacher at Miller Heights, and she's in her sixth year in education and her fourth year in Belton. Holly serves as grade-level leader, as a campus representative for instructional rounds training, and even leads a campus book study. She has a strong desire to learn and grow professionally, which inspires her students and her colleagues. Her passion for math and science creates excitement in all of her students, which results in them giving her their very best. Jennifer Connor, principal at Miller Heights, stated Holly's very organized and takes a thorough approach to planning, collaborating, and teaching. She consistently creates engaging, high levels of instruction, and is a valuable asset to the Miller Heights learning family. So, congratulations, Holly.
Congratulations, Holly. Proud of you. And you know, unless it's already happened, you get to have lunch at the Belton Rotary Club with our very...have you already done that?
Not yet.
Oh, good. Well, with our very own assistant superintendents. That's quite a treat, man. You think that certificate's worth something? Having lunch with Phil and Merle is a really big deal. Oh, and board members. Absolutely, that's right. They're special guests. And you know what? We ought to just call them your special guests.
My special guest?
Exactly.
Merle and Phil are doing a great job.
That's wonderful. Okay, our final recognition this evening is for our Big Red Community Partner. We've been doing this each month this year, and this month is a really appropriate Big Red Partner recognition.
We've celebrated a lot of student success tonight, and that only happens because we're blessed to live in a community that supports our students, helps them excel and succeed. And in no place is that more true than with our three-time state champion teamwork students... And in no place is that more true than with our three-time state champion teamwork students. MW Builders has been absolutely integral to the teamwork's team's success, both in the state competition and at Nationals. They've brought in their own experts to coach and mentor the students, walking them through details of carpentry, masonry, metal framing, and really mentoring them to cultivate their teamwork skills and their ability to work together as a team. They flew to Kentucky last summer to support our teamwork students at the national competition. The list really does go on and on, but for these and so many other reasons, we're really proud to and grateful to recognize MW Builders as the Big Red Community Partner this month. And we're joined by their Vice President of Operations, Jason Oldham, and Safety Manager, John Francis, tonight.
I just want to add, and, oh, listen, I just want to add, you folks represent what we, what we want our Big Red Community Partners to be. You've just jumped in and said, "What do you need?" And I hear repeatedly from Mr. Sullivan, "And whatever we need, they're just there for us." And then you just show up when they're competing to cheer them on. Not only do you provide the training ahead of time, you show up to cheer for them. That says a lot about you and your investment in our kids and our program, and about your involvement in our community. You are what we want Big Red Community Partners to be about, so thank you. We appreciate y'all. Y'all are fortunate to have you, guys.
Okay, I think that got us through the, all of the recognitions. I did want to just have one shout-out, special thank you to Lakewood's staff, Judy and Chad in the back. Old Glory Day last week was really something special, and hosting the Ride and Recovery bikers was a huge event, really a special event for our community, and I think that was the 29th, so next year is going to be a really, really big celebration of the 30th anniversary of that great event. Okay, we get everybody, Kyle? We didn't miss any, did we? Okay. Didn't see anybody sign up for public comments, so we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Do any board members have any items from the Consent Agenda they'd like pulled for Hearing none, let me identify those items. We have the minutes of the March 28th, 2016 Regular Board Meeting. We have the Unhonored Financial Report for the month ending March 31st, 2016. We have the Grants, Gifts Grants, and Bequests of less than $1,000. Those are on page 39, listed on the screen there. We don't need to officially approve those because they're below that threshold requiring that, but we do want to thank those and recognize those folks for those donations to our students and programs and our schools. We have other revenues of at least $1,000, but less than $10,000 that does require board approval. We have $3,950 donation from the Magic Bells Booster Club in support of their national competition, at which they won the grand championship. We have one budget amendment for 2015-16 year, this is for the Belton High School Roof Project A that we approved last month, Funds 199 and 699, Function 81. This moves $1,417,494 from the committed fund balance to a capital projects fund, as we have previously discussed, but it's the official budget amendment for that. We have the Audit Engagement Letter for 2015-16 to approve the engagement of Patio Brown and Hill PC for the annual financial audit for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2016. Been very pleased with the work the PBH has done for us in the past and look forward to their work again this year. And then we have Board Policy Update 104 affecting local policies, EEH Local, FB Local, FD Local, FEB Local, FFC Local, and FFH Local. Thank you, Angela, for your work in prepping us for all that and providing the supporting documents to what TASB provided. That is the Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve? Motion from Zwinkler and a second from Ms. Digby. All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. It passes unanimously. Let's go to the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Three things to tell you about tonight. First is just a little sneak peek into graduation. These are pictures from last year, but our 2016 graduating ceremonies are coming up quickly. We have about six weeks of school remaining, and we are busily, busy preparing for graduation. We anticipate a graduating total of 766 students this year. That's 663 students at Belton High School and 103 students at New Tech High School. And again, once again, this will be the largest class of graduates in Belton ISD's history.
Those numbers just flew by me. Say that again.
766 students total graduating in Belton ISD this year. Our graduation ceremonies are scheduled for Thursday, June the 2nd, at the Bell County Expo Center. However, this year, we will have different times for those events, and I wanted to point that out to you. Our Belton New Tech High School at Wasco graduation will be at 2:00 PM. That's about 30 minutes earlier than last year. And Belton High School's ceremony will be at 7:00 PM. For many years, we've had that at 8:00, and this year, we're going to have it at 7:00. So, that will be nice, a nice change. And then prior to graduation on Sunday, May the 29th, is Baccalaureate, and that's sponsored by the Belton Fellowship of Ministers, and that event will be held at 2:00 PM at the First Baptist Church. We are preparing to celebrate, but as I said, we do have several weeks of school left, and we have a lot to do. We do have some seniors that our counselors and staff are still following closely, chasing them down for those last credits, and working to meet those EOC requirements. But we're extremely excited about graduation coming up. Next, I'd like to announce our Belton ISD Teachers of the Year for 2016. You may have seen lots of social media posts about these teachers on campus sites, however, I wanted to make sure that you got a chance to see their names this evening, and I'd like to read those to you. At Belton High School, our Teacher of the Year is Barbara Epperson. At Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, it's Tiffany Rousseau. Lake Belton Middle School is Eric Thornall. North Belton Middle School, it's Erica Kinsey. At South Belton Middle School, it's Nikki Daniel. At Chisholm Trail Elementary, it's Sylvia Morales. At High Point Elementary, it's Nicole Stirk. At Lakewood Elementary, it's Legay Pittenger. At Leon Heights Elementary, it's Deborah Johnson. At Miller Heights Elementary, it's Jennifer Gilden. Purtle Elementary, it's Amber Johansson. At Southwest Elementary, it's Daryl Stapper. At Sparta Elementary, Suzie Lunsford. Tarver Elementary is Laura Lovett. And at the Belton Early Childhood School, the Teacher of the Year is Kimberly Bishansky. We look forward to honoring these teachers at a special luncheon on Wednesday, May the 25th, and that's at 11:30 at the Bell County Expo Center. And we do have a special guest speaker this year that I'm especially excited about. Shanna Peoples is the National Teacher of the Year, was named National Teacher of the Year in August of 2015. She's from Texas. She teaches high school English in Amarillo. I've been following her on social media since the fall, when I saw a video clip of her that played at a conference that I was at, and I was so impressed by her story and her success as a teacher, that I asked our Human Resources staff to please see if she could come and speak at our luncheon, and she has accepted and will be here. So, I hope that each of you is able to attend and help us celebrate our Teachers of the Year for 2016.
Penny Digby will also be one of our special guest speakers at that.
Yes, thank you, Penny. And then finally, just to mention about spring update presentations each year, my team and I go out to all the campuses and departments in the district to do a couple of things. First, we honor our staff for the years of service to the district. We pass out service pins and honor our retirees and give out the prestigious Every Kid a Winner Awards. But we also provide a presentation, which has been in video format for the last couple of years, to tell about the successes of the school year and provide information that we want all of our staff to hear about. So, we are going to do that as a video again this year. We do have those scheduled. I believe you have a schedule in front of you for those. They start on May the 2nd and run all the way until June 1st. So, we'd love for you to come to at least one of those to get that update and help us to celebrate our staff members, and you can just let us know.
Yeah, let me, I want to encourage you to come to as many of those as you can, not just one of them, but as many. It's a great opportunity for us, not just to hear the update, but to recognize and honor these staff members. I especially encourage you to attend one at a campus or department you may not have been to before. It's a great opportunity to do that and to be on those campuses, and the staff appreciate the opportunity to get to meet us. So, please join us, and one of us will have a brief word, very brief, at the end, on behalf of the board.
Lots of photo ops.
And it's a photo op, that's right.
Photo ops with our staff.
With pins.
Pins and fun Apple retiree awards and such, so, thank you.
Good deal. Okay, next item. Dr. Brandon, you want to walk us through the mission, approval of the Vision, Mission, and Goals of the Board and District?
Yes, sir.
We do this each year about this time, so we can really kick off the planning for next year. As Dr. King Cannon was talking about graduation, it's a great time for us to say, "Oh, and next year, we'll be here before we know it, so we need to be planning for next school year."
And it starts early. So, good evening, and you're right, on Monday, we met with DEWIC, and we looked at the Vision, Mission, and Goals for the district, and it was a nice tie because Dr. King Cannon started that meeting with a Long Range Facilities Planning update, and one of the slides right off the bat contained the mission. And so, when you look at that, the vision of Belton ISD to be a leader in preparing every student to excel in tomorrow's world, and then the mission, to provide an education that challenges all of our students to excel. And I don't know how you have a better showing of that than just like when we started the meeting tonight, across all different programs, just an excellent example of what the students are accomplishing. You look at Goal 1, the committee that we've had for long-range planning, over 80 citizens and administrators to discuss that. Goal 2, achieving success on the state's student achievement, great star scores in the district. Goal 3, retaining high-quality administration and faculty. Those are reflective, right? The team is as good as the coach, and when those people take the pride in it, you see that come out in those achievements. Goal 4, safe and supportive environment. Goal 5, shared partnerships, the MW Builders, the Big Red Community Partners, the AP Dual Credit Classes that we have with our local colleges. And then Goal 6, complying with all state and federal guidelines. Just have amazing special programs within the district, and very, a lot of compliments are received continually from parents and community members on what those community, on what those special programs offer. So, they're in place, and they're good goals, and as we reviewed those with DEWIC, they felt good about them and didn't have any suggestions for change. They're working for the district. A quick look at the planning process, just to kind of see where we're at. We're in April with the review by the DEWIC Committee, and then now the Board Review and Approval this evening of the Vision, Mission, and Goals. And you're right, Mr. Pinder, there'll be a lot of work between May and August, but DEWIC will have input in that, all of our administrators, every campus team will come together and work on their plans, and then all that will culminate, and then we'll bring the plan for 1617 back to you in August.
Well, we keep our board goals up here, and what some of you in the audience may not know is that every item on our agenda, we get information about, and it, that information packet begins with what goal are we attempting to meet by this action item. And so, every item on our agenda addresses a goal, starts at a goal, gets some historical background, and then what's the action recommended. So, we use these goals on a regular basis to build our plans and our goals and establish budgets, and then we use it to monitor and evaluate how we're doing as a district. So, these are, these are real goals. These are active, and they've served us well. So, I thank you for the way that you identified each one of them. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this, about them?
I might add that these, that the, this. I just wanted to add that the district and, district plan will include the Superintendent Board Performance Goals that we talked about previously, so those will be taken and incorporated into this document.
Good point. Okay, entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion for Ms. Jordan. Second, Mr. Camden. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Brandon, appreciate you working on that. Look forward to what you bring us with the district and then campus plans moving forward. Didn't know anybody wanted to second that motion. That seemed like an easy one. Come on, y'all. All right. Mrs. Shirley, you want to talk to us about Personnel, Human Resources, Actions? This is the time of year when we review all contracts, all professional contracts, except for the Superintendent's Contract, which we've already done.
Right. Yep, as you said, this is that time of year where we provide that information to the Board, and this year, start off with the administrative contracts. When new administrator comes into the district, they enter a one-year contract on a probationary level, a probationary contract, and then after that, we assign them to a one-year contract or a two-year term contract. And it's based on the chart that's provided there in your packet. So, tonight, we're recommending that you approve the list we provided.
And?
And then the professional contracts. Individuals come into the district, they start out on a one-year contract. If they haven't worked five out of the last eight years in the education profession, then they will complete three years on a probationary period. If they've worked five of the eight, they'll complete one full year in a probationary contract, and then move to a term contract, one-year term contract after that. And the list for those recommendations are also provided.
Great. Well, let me just say on behalf of the Board, for those of you present, and please pass on to those who are not present, to your staff, the success of our district is not something we take for granted. It certainly is something we expect, we have high expectations in our community, this Board has high expectations for our students. But the work that our administrative team does, the work that our professional faculty does to accomplish that, those goals, is extraordinary. And we see great results because we see great dedication and effort and work being put forth on a daily basis. And so, as Dr. King Cannon has reviewed with us, those contracts and the work that each of you are doing in your campuses and departments, we just want to add a thank you. Certainly, we want to renew your contract, that's important, but more importantly, I think we want you to know how much we appreciate your dedication to making a difference and providing opportunities for all of our children to excel. They are excelling because of your work. So, thank you. Please pass on to your staff, your teachers, your other administrators and other professional, those others on professional contracts in your departments or campuses, how much we appreciate the work that they're doing for our children. This is a great district to be part of, and special things are happening for our kids here. And our greatest resources are human resources, so thank you for your work. So, with that, unless somebody has anything to add, I need a motion to, have a motion for Ms. Winkler, second, Mr. Cowan, to approve the Administrative Contract Renewals and Extensions and Professional Contract Renewals as presented. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then the next item is some new.
Yep. Some new personnel. Before we get there, I'd like to introduce to you Mike Nielsen.
Oh, yeah. You know what, I had a note, Mike Nielsen.
Is a maintenance director. He got a bachelor's degree from, Bachelor's of Business Administration and Finance from Southwest Texas State University, has about 29 years of management experience, 12 of those in the school district, and he has been with us for the last couple of weeks, I guess now, and he has hit the ground running. So, we're excited that he's here.
Mike, welcome to the district. We had a chance to meet earlier before the meeting started, but we appreciate you being here and look forward to what you bring to help, help our great staff take care of our facilities. We, one of the things we're known for, I'm sure you've heard this many times now, but we're known for taking a lot of pride in our facilities. Even our very old facilities, even our facilities that have been repurposed multiple times, they still look good. And they look good from the front as people arrive, they look good inside, and they're kept clean and in good repair. And so, we look forward to what you bring to continuing that reputation of excellence and taking care of our great staff. So, thank you for joining our team. We look forward to your work with us.
And then, as far as the recommendations tonight, we have a Health Science teacher that we're recommending out for, to start this school year, a counselor, a teacher, two teachers for the next school year, and then an individual moving from a teacher-coach contract to a teacher contract. And then the volleyball coach that we approved last month, we are going to be able to get them to start effective May the 2nd, so that'll be for this school year as well. We've received and accepted 24 resignations, and we have 34 positions open for the upcoming school year.
We've noted there's some pretty significant retirements coming in. We're losing a lot. We've noted there's some pretty significant retirements coming in, we're losing a lot of dedication to this school district and some well-earned retirements this year, but we'll celebrate those that are recognitions later this month.
Absolutely.
That's what King Cannon mentioned, and I'm sure there might even be some more coming in in the next few weeks.
They have until July 8th, I think is that cutoff date, that 45 days before the start of the school.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve personnel recommendations? Have a motion for Ms. Digby? Second for Mr. Cowan? Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your work on all that. Now, this is a busy time for the Human Resources Department, appreciate you all keeping that together. Okay, the next item is an exciting one, because it's always good when Jennifer comes to tell us we can save money. We look forward to Jennifer Douglas coming, and she serves as our financial advisor and works with specialized public finance. Jennifer, thank you for once again identifying an opportunity for us to save some money. Phil, you're going to get us started?
I'll just get us started really quick, because we've been down over the past few years, we've gone in, taken a look at the markets and looked at the interest rates, and Jennifer, and through her guidance and assistance, has always helped us, and we are coming this year once again to ask for permission to go ahead and take a look at those things, and Jennifer has a little program for us today to sort of see what we see on the market right now.
Great. In addition, Jennifer Glenn Oples here, we appreciate Glenn, we see him regularly too, and thank you for being here to keep us legal.
We're going to let Glenn do the presentation next time, he always has to sit over there and doesn't get to say anything fun. So, yeah, this is almost, I guess, our annual trip out here to talk about refinancing opportunities. We're taking a look, as Phil did a good summary there, at sort of the remaining portion of 2010 bonds, we've been kind of picking those off as they come available. For the last couple of years, we've been trying to keep under $10 million your bank-qualified limit, because when you issue less than $10 million in a calendar year, you get a little bit better interest rate. So, I passed around a little summary here, I just want to show you, we always have this little interest rate graph, it probably doesn't mean too much to most people, but I want to call your attention to the box that says statistics, the very last line in that box says that 99.43% of the time, interest rates...
Is there a way we can put this up on the screen for everybody? Phil, can you do that, or Cal, can you help, or some tech person? Oh, Jennifer, all right, push a button somewhere to make it transfer. Who knows how to do that?
I'm going to mess up everything, probably.
No, it's not in the packet.
Yeah, it's not the order.
All right, we've got a, what is that, is that an Elmo? How do you transfer to the Elmo? Okay, sorry. Well, it might be nice for everybody else to see this, a cool little graph.
Yeah, well, essentially, what we're trying to show here is that 99.43% of the time, interest rates have been higher than they are now. So, although it is in graphical form, really, the point is that it's 99.5% of the time, interest rates have been higher than they are today. So, that's really the point that we're trying to make with that graph.
Wow.
So, if we can't get it up there...
That's significant.
That's the important feature, is that we're at almost all-time losing the market.
99.5% of the time.
99.43% technically, percent of the time, interest rates have been higher than they are today. So, obviously, we sometimes come to you, and they were 99.2% of the time, or 91 or 93, but obviously, to get close to 100% is pretty good. So, anytime we can take the opportunity to refinance in that type of market, that's why we're coming to you. So, what we're looking at is picking off portions of your 2010 bonds, we've been looking at that over the last couple of years. You have some leases that Phil was good enough to point out that you're doing for different projects, technology and some buses of about $2.5 million. And again, our goal is to make sure that we do not exceed $10 million in this calendar year. So, we're sizing this around those leases, and we want to make sure that you don't have any other projects coming up either, because we would need to know about that now. So, we're basically filling in, after you have the $2.5 million in leases, what's left over would be $7.5 million, we're filling in up to $7.5 million with this refinancing. So, if you look at page one, listed as page one of the attachment, we are refunding several maturities of those outstanding 2010 bonds. The thing that I'll point out on that page, it's of significance, is that the interest rates that those bonds carry is between a 4.375% or 4 and 3/8s to 5%. So, those are the interest rates that we're looking at paying off. By comparison, on page two, the interest rate that we'd be receiving if we were to go out to market today on a new issue of the same term would be 2.99%. So, again, we're replacing 4 and 3/8s to 5% with 2.99%, that's where the savings are generated. As always, we're not extending the term to make it look like there is savings, we're not doing anything unusual to make the appearance of savings be there, we're simply replacing a 4 and a 3/8s to 5% with a 2.99%. And even after cost of issuance, because there are cost of issuance to consider, just like when you refinance a mortgage, but even after that's been paid, that next page, debt service comparison, shows that we'd be saving about $850,000, if you look at that far-right-hand column that says savings, applying these new interest rates, the new 2.99% to the new issuance, what we would come out with is about $846,000 in savings over the life of the issue, so not all at once, but between 2017 and 2035 is when those savings would be realized. On a percentage basis, that's almost 10%, if you look down there, third line from the bottom, it represents about 9.7% savings over what you're currently paying. So, anytime we can get numbers like that, I think the order that Glenn prepared says that if you hit savings of 3% or greater, you have the ability to move forward, but we're well in excess of that and hope to be, you know, staying around that 10% threshold. We have some additional pages in here to kind of have for your reference, but there's not anything of significance that I would point out to you. That last page, if you were to take action tonight to move forward, we would try and move as quickly as possible to capture this market and try and be in market by the last week of May, would be our goal, so we've already started in the process and coordinated with Phil, setting up a rating call with Standard and Poor's tomorrow, if you give us the go-ahead tonight, we'll go ahead and apply for the permanent school fund bond guarantee. Our goal is to move as quickly as possible. So, May 2nd is the date that's already been set up for the rating call, assuming that you take action tonight, it can certainly be canceled otherwise. And as always, I would like to point out that the action that you're taking tonight does not bind you to doing this, it simply says that should the savings be there, you're giving yourselves the authority to delegate to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance to move forward in your stead, so we don't have to come back to the next board meeting date and price that date. If the savings hit any, you know, it actually says 3%, but our goal is going to be to be much, much closer to this 10% threshold. If they were to get to the level, they have the authority to act on your behalf, we don't have to come back, and we can move as quickly as possible should we be able to do so.
Or if something weird happens and they spike up, we can hold off.
If interest rates spike up, this lasts for six months, we have six months in that period to execute this, if nothing happens in six months, it simply goes away, we have to come back to you, there's no fees charged to you to taking this opportunity, it simply is kind of a belt and suspenders. Hopefully, it'll turn out to be just what we expect, but as you point out, should something change, we put it on the shelf and we come back and look at it again.
Right. Glenn, do you have anything to add for us?
Unless you have questions, you pretty much stole my time.
Well, it seems like we've heard this before, and every time, it's good news. Again, when you all show up, you bring us good news, and anytime we can save money, that's good news, and that's what we want to do, and we appreciate you continuing to bring these each year so that we can maximize the cost savings. Anybody have any questions about this? Okay, well, we have a very specific amendment, would you scroll up to the amendment, because I want to make sure we do this one right. Scroll down, I should have said, I'm sorry, I think I said that wrong. There you go. So, would someone like to make that motion? Mike?
Sure. I'd like to move that we approve the order authorizing the issuance of Belton Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2016, an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, providing for the award of the sale thereof in accordance with specified parameters, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase contract, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an escrow agreement relating to such bonds, approving the preparation of an efficient statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
I have a motion? Well, well said, Mike.
Thank you.
Have a motion, is there a second to the motion?
Yeah.
Second for Mr. Camden. Any other questions for Stropol? Legal wise, all in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Thank you, please go, that passes unanimously, please go save us some money, thank you again for being here tonight with us, and thank you for bringing us and working with Phil and his staff to do this. Glenn, we always appreciate you keeping us legal, that's what you do, and we appreciate that. Okay, the next item, we have been talking for three years about how we're going to address the growth in this district and how best to do that, and what we should do, and last month, Dr. King Cannon, you brought us a proposal for the roadmap to 2025, you want to summarize that proposal for us?
Sure. As you said, we have been studying our facility's needs for the past three, almost three years now, and we did lay out that plan for you last month, which calls for a bond election in 2017, the construction of a new elementary school to open in August of 2019, the repurposing of Belton High School 9 to reopen as a middle school in August of 2021, and the construction of a new comprehensive high school to open also in August of 2021. We did develop RFQs, two RFQs, to hire architects to design an elementary school and a high school, those have been posted, and once the plan is approved by the board, we will interview architects and make recommendations to you at the June meeting. The plan is conceptual, however, there's still a lot of work that is left to be done upon your approval this evening. We'll still have to determine where schools will be located, how much they will cost, and how big the second comprehensive high school might be. So, those decisions will be made prior to calling a bond election, and this is our red plan, this is the 2025 plan that we've been building towards. So, it is my recommendation that the board adopt a 2025 long-range facilities plan as presented.
You know, it's significant to note that while this, in some sense, is a symbolic vote, because it's not authorizing any money to be spent or any specific actions to be taken, it triggers a number of actions to be taken to implement the plan. We've been working on this for a long time, we've talked about a lot of different options, and the comprehensive nature of the study, the inclusive process involving so many people in this process has been notable and commendable. I thank you, and you and your staff for the work that you've done on this, we really appreciate how everything is on the website and readily available to anybody who wants to look at that. We got the recommendation last month, let it simmer in the committee for a month, I'm kind of curious to hear what people have heard. Everybody I've talked to has been very positive and supportive with the question of how do we pay for it, and what will the legislature do? That obviously is the lingering question of the Supreme Court ruling still out there and the anticipated action by the legislature, which I might add, again, I think we should just go ahead and say, we're going to have to wait till November to do a bond election, there's just no way we could do a bond election in the middle of a, we could call one before the legislature's even acted. We just wouldn't know. But aiming towards a November 2017 bond issue for that high school seems to be a pretty well-accepted plan for the community. Anybody, what are y'all hearing? Comments?
Same.
Okay.
Well, I'll just say that this has been a real struggle for me, just because it's very hard for me to look at it as the Belton community, and a lot of people talking about how it's going to split the community, and then you have the first side of people saying it's really not and everything, but I feel like our responsibility on the board is to do what's best for all the students in the district. And for that, I don't think we want a 6,000-student high school, I don't think that's beneficial to the majority of the kids in the district, and so, that's why I'm able to support this, and we will find a way to continue to make it one community.
Yeah, Penny, I appreciate you saying that, because that has been the struggle for, I guess, all of us, you said it well, and the committee and everybody involved. I want to use that, I'll just tell you, every buddy I've talked to in the last month, and every group that we've had an opportunity to talk to, and that's included some boards and some Chamber of Commerce and stuff, I've pitched the idea, just to ask them what they thought of you calling it, whether we call it the Lake Belton or North Belton High School Tigers in red and white, and so, it's the Big Red Community, and so, our children from elementary school are Belton Tigers, our three middle schools are Belton Tigers, and that second high school would be Belton Tigers. And so, there's a lot of comment about, well, nobody does it that way, well, that's the Belton way, and maybe that's okay, maybe that's a new way. And it would be a long time before they would even compete against each other, but we've seen that work with our middle schools competing against each other, and one wears red, one wears white, and they're playing on the Belton Tiger field, and that's okay too. And so, I really like the idea. I'll tell you, I even had one long time, Belton person tell me, that's how you'll get a bond issue passed if you'll do that. I thought that was significant, that we won't be dividing the community, we'll be expanding and multiplying the Big Red Community. Obviously, that's an issue, a decision to make down the road, but I think it's something that we ought to seriously consider. I said it, and people laughed the first time I said it, but I keep saying it to people, and people kind of keep liking it, so just pitch it out there for continued consideration. Anything else that we ought to consider in this?
Well, I think the largest concern that we're still, you're voting for a roadmap or a comprehensive plan, a guide, I guess, to our growth that matches our demographic student population's, how it's going to grow, the largest question still comes, even though if someone votes yes for the plan, there's no way are we, any way of calling the bond or getting close of getting that money.
That's correct.
As of right now, it'd be hard for anyone with our tax dollars to come around with the increase in taxes it would take to support that, so that's still down the road.
We don't have the location for the elementary school yet, that's something that's coming soon, that we're going to have to decide certain.
Decided on in the mail.
The size of the high school.
There's still a lot of moving parts.
Exactly.
That have to be...
But this'll set in the motion, begin to take steps to the, you're right, Jason. Other comments? Well, Penny, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I would make a motion that we adopt the 2025 plan that's presented by the administration tonight.
We adopt the roadmap, the red plan for the roadmap to Belton ISD 2025. Have a motion, and a second for Mr. Cowan, any other comments? Amanda, do you want to add anything?
I thought we were going to be the Lake Belton Bass.
Fighting Bass.
No.
The Fighting Bass.
Just don't say the rest of that.
Be careful what the rest of that cheer is, that's the problem.
Just kidding. I appreciate the work, it's been a lot of years, a lot of years coming to just get to this point, and like Jason said, it's not, we're not making any finalities on exactly how the logistics will play out, but we have to have a plan, we needed a plan, and now we can really push forward for the growth of our children, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. And that passes unanimously, we have a roadmap to 2025. Thank you all for how you've participated in this process.
You see me smiling.
Thank you. And now, work begins to implement the roadmap, because as again, as Jason said, this just, there's a whole lot of questions out there, but we've had people involved in the process, and we're going to have to continue to look at serious questions about how big, what can we afford, what can we, how do we maintain those equitable issues that we've talked about, and so, plenty of work ahead of us.
But there's a lot of interest about the plan in the community, so I do appreciate you adopting that. I've been asked to speak a lot to a lot of groups about what the work of the board and the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, so appreciate it.
Okay. Any issues or concerns for future agenda or administrative reports? Amanda? Mike? Penny?
No.
Sue? Who, Jason?
No.
Okay, let me identify a few future events on our calendar, we have the Superintendent Scholars, special event coming up on Wednesday, want to be sure and be there to celebrate that. The Belton New Tech High School, Wasco Campouts this week, so will be a great opportunity. Does she go back there? Yes. Fun... Fun opportunity. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. Mike, you going to be out there for moral support this year?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. But maybe not camping out the whole time.
Oh, there you go.
Good, good deal. Then on the 26th, the Marine Corps Junior ROTC Awards. Should have gotten a special invitation to that. We'll be recognizing a couple of our special students at the Incredible Kids on the 27th, the Magic Bell Spring Show that we mentioned. Our trustee election is early voting will start next Monday on the 25th, run through May 3rd, and then the election is May 7th. Ron Bailey and Jeff Norwood are with us tonight. That's just for Area 1, so only those who reside in that area will have an opportunity to vote. Early voting is here at the administration building and voting on. That day is at Lakewood Elementary School, and will, the results will be reported here the evening, May 7th. And so if you want to come out and hear the results, you're welcome to join us here. Thank you for reminding me. The West Belton Harris Ex-Student Association banquet is on May 1st. You should have gotten the invitation. If you haven't, you're getting one now. Have received that. This is banquet season and concert season, and so we need to get there. There's particularly, there's some conflicts. There's one night coming up where we have two different banquets, and we'll need to make sure we split, so we want to coordinate our attendance so we can be at everything. Our next regular meeting is May 16th, at which time we'll also have on the agenda the canvas votes and recognize Ms. Digby. Any information that you may want to get, need to get to Connie for the Tazby Summer Leadership Institute, please be sure and get that to her soon. Registration for courses. I would suggest that everybody plan to get there that Wednesday evening for the, oh, I forgot what they call it, the financial--
Fiscal.
Fiscal, I forgot what it's called. But it's a special training, some special training on financial management. I think that'd be a good one for us to start with, and having looked at that, thought, if at all possible, let's go and get there. She is pre-registered for us, for that. But if you're not going to be able to get there early enough for that, you'll let her know, so she can change that registration. That would be helpful. And again, the recognitions at each campus and department that you've been given, we want to make sure that's on everybody's agenda. Okay. Did I miss anything on the agenda? Okay, at this time, the board will, let me see. It is, oh, I don't know what time it is. It is 7:12. At this time, the board will go into closed session to hear and consider a Level 3 parent-student grievance on a complain or charge against an officer or employee under Texas Government Code Section 551-074, and consultation with attorney regarding the Level 3 parent-student grievance on a complain or charge against an officer or employee, Texas Government Code Section 551. We will return to open session to take any action that may be needed. Thank you for joining us. It is 8:41, and we will reconvene in open session to take action regarding our closed session. It's my recommendation that the board deny Joshua and Lisa Caruso's grievance appeal and uphold the administration's decision at Level 2. Is there a motion? A motion for Mr. Cowan? Is there a second? Second for Ms. Jordan. Any other comments or questions? In favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. Mr. Mr. Caruso, I want to just add on behalf of the board that we agree with the administration's comments, that we all regret the circumstances on that day. However, we do believe that the administration's actions that have been taken subsequent to the incident have been appropriate, and our wishes at this point are for Ethan's education to continue to be successful in his current setting.[1775.58]